Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I was just talking briefly with the city administrator. I don't know if, I have only limited materials, but I just have the items listed here, but not the actual packet materials.
So I was messaging Lindsay here. They were in you guys' box. So they were there to be reviewed. She said, you know, there's not any laws that were revoked. It's just that we didn't get them all in email this week, so we'll make sure to note that. But they were in you guys' box. And they are here too as well.
All right. And are there actual receipt and claims and payroll numbers?
I believe they should all be in there.
Are those in packets over there? I thought I had picked those up from my.
I looked through it and I didn't see anything missing, but.
No, these, just right here, these lines.
Oh, 7.1.
Well, I guess in the interests of trying to keep some kind of an official record, I could see being in order to maybe approve the consent agenda subject to consideration of 6.1 and the agenda item seven matters maybe at our next council meeting? Does that, all right. So I'd entertain a motion to that effect? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
To that effect? All right. Is there support?
Support.
All right. Further discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the consent agenda and then, I don't know, do we need to take special action, city attorney, to lay those 6.1 and seven items over to the next meeting?
Yeah, to make a motion to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? Moved, support?
Support.
Moved and supported, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are laid over then. Appearances? I'm assuming our Iowa delegation is not wishing to make an appearance, and so do you have anything to address to the council?
Nope, just came to say hello and welcome Luke, you know, and Richard as the new folks. And I just happen to be in town on such a lovely day, so I thought I'd stop by.
Well, it keeps snowing, you may be sorry. All right, we've had our reports from staff members, right? So agenda item 11 is taken care of. Community comments were part of the consent agenda. Moving on down to agenda item 14, reports from councilors. Additionally, we do those kind of in seniority level. Councilor Hess, do you have any matters to report?
The only thing I have is hats off to the city crew for the job they've done this winter. We have two problems here and there, but we always get some complaints about snow falling, but then people you get them from don't fall snow anyhow, so I kind of go in one ear and out.
You certainly know that business a lot.
Well, I've been doing it for 25 years. So hats off to them and that's about it.
Okay.
Couple more storms, they'll be done.
It's been a record year, not, I mean, we get complaints every year, right? But this year even more so, probably, right? So thank you for your report. Councilor Cody?
Yeah, at the HRE meeting, one of the things we went over and were discussing, those matching grants for people to do improvements for their homes, we're trying to decide how much money we have to work with, how many we'll make and the value of them. We're working on that. And the grocery store thing is still, still kind of where it's always been.
The one difference on that, I think it was probably reported, was that the IRRB has been in direct contact with the lender group, and it's the lender group that's saying, this is still alive, you know, and they just haven't given the gray light. So it's not, I think all of us have run into lives of being with developers, right? You know, and they're sometimes wild-eyed optimists, but the financial people usually have a way of keeping it more moderated, and is that what the message that came across at the HRE?
Well, they've talked about that, yeah, but no real concrete decisions about anything have changed.
No, that's, that's, that's bottom line, correct. Other matters then?
The planning and zoning, we had no business, so we didn't have a meeting this month. Everyone has gotten their income tax, or real estate tax statements, and I just want to say again, it's been brought up before, but they can look into applying for refunds. I called myself on the back of your form, I just made a copy, there's a number to call, and I called that this week, and they're sending me the instructions and forms to fill out to see if you're eligible for an income tax, or a real estate tax refund, and it's probably something people should look into with the big increase we had this year. And then the fire department just finished eight hours of hazardous material training. They put a lot of time into training and they really do a wonderful job, and other than that, they have their pancake feed coming up on April 16th, and it would be a way for the community to support them and show their appreciation for the work and time they put in. That's about all I have.
Good, thank you for that report. Let's see, Councilor Joss?
Okay, so again, planning and zoning, no applications means no meeting. The Rams meeting this month, we had Miriam Caro from Northspan join us. She talked about Northland Connections, which deals, tried more early with like a lot of commercial real estate and stuff, and applications, or excuse me, and then North Forest, which was a great time, or a great thing that they do is they help people with applications and posting jobs, so they work hand in hand with a lot of communities. Also at the Rams meeting, as you all know, we're looking for a new, I don't know.
Director.
Director, I have home administrator, but I knew that wasn't right. We received four applications, April 6th is the interview. East Range Public Safety Board, we got reports from Chief Suler that it has been busy because of the warmer weather. Property crimes have dropped, but they're kind of expecting things to go up with the warm weather, which is kind of sad, but Steph, Officer Matheson, she completed her DRE training in Pennsylvania, so she is now, we now have a drug recognition expert who is certified in our, on our East Range, our East Range PD. And that, actually, I think that is all I have to add, so thank you.
There you go, thank you. Councilor Hahn?
Not much. Our committee meets the third Monday at 3:00 PM at City Hall, and caring for kids, I'm still thinking of a bigger project to do within the city, and we'll bring that to the council for approval in the future. That's all I have. Thanks.
Good. I thought it was appropriate, I know a number of us attended, but certainly to recognize the efforts at the Allegiant for the rededication, real congratulations in order to them for sprucing the place up, surviving as long as they have, and hosting a really wonderful community memorable event there, and thanks to all those that went into making that possible. I went to the Habitat for Humanity dinner, and the keynote speaker was one of our own Aurora residents who had succeeded in getting a Habitat home, Autumn Ritchie, and did a wonderful job of speaking, a real credit to herself, family, and to the community, just thought I'd share that. It was kind of nice. Yeah, East Range Drake Powers Board, really, the initiatives are working now with Minnesota Housing Partnership in evolving that kind of a relationship, which will be about a two or three-year project, enlisting their, that organization's expertise with now some of the housing studies, and then pairing it with, over that three-year period, refining it down to action points. So it's East Range generally, but it's quite an honor to be accepted for participation with that Minnesota Housing Partnership. A lot of communities compete for that status. Water project, we're still waiting for the legislature to refund the public facilities authority, to give us, give them the money to give to us, so we can do the last chunk of the financing there, but in the meantime, because of the federal monies that came in, there's been a requirement for an update on hydrology reports, which those of you that have been involved for a while know that have been done periodically, like 2012, 2014, 2015, on the pit there, the embarrassed pit mine, and now they're wanting those updated, and our engineering's going to be enlisted to update their last study, even though SEH is our main engineer. Project labor agreement forums, gone to the unions for review, the land interests, the ROSA land interests, which are the road into, or the easement areas going into the City Gators area have been now secured, they're going to be approved finally by the town board at its meeting, I think, next week, and that project's very much on track, and just, again, waiting, Luke could attest to the fact, we've been assured there are very positive actions going on in the legislature on funding that will come here, but it is the legislature, so you don't count your chickens before they're hatched, you know, kind of thing. Earth Fest is coming up, April 22nd in Virginia. Obviously, it's an area-wide thing, and it has a lot of interesting ideas I'd recommend for people to go there and see what folks are doing with their homes, their gardens, various other projects. It's not just energy limited, it's a lot times for innovative things. And we have our volunteer recognition event on April 20th, which Jen and Lindsay and a number of us have been working on planning, and the mailings should have gone out today, I think. Look, I don't know, I know we sealed up the envelope this morning, and going out to invite about 200 volunteers in the communities to a dinner at the community center on the 20th. So, other than that, happy birthday to Jan Moore, eternally young, but celebrating another birthday, and I believe that's my report, so. Moving on then, old business, 16.1, potential corrective sale of property, city attorney, anything to report on that?
Still, we're working on that. There's a thing in the legal, they recorded it, like I said before, and I have to get it changed to please the Coney Recorder's office. Usually they reject them, but they didn't reject this one, and they've been calling me to correct it, and I asked, why did you record it if you didn't like it? So I'll get that done.
All right, I'm sure we have every copy, that's very good. That concludes the old business. Moving on to new business, agenda item 17, 17.1 is resolution 2023-09, Sexual Assault Awareness Month resolution. Those of you who have packets, you know what, you just take this one and you're in.
There you are.
All right, very good.
I'll share with you, Richard.
All right, well, that's kind of council cooperation meeting. All right, so there's a prepared resolution in the packet that would declare the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I believe this is a little bit behind the national effort, right?
It is, the mailing goes to the ex-mayor's house, so we had to get that updated, and we're working on that, but we're still there.
It's still important, still important. All right, is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution? Moved, support?
Support.
Moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have our resolution adopted. 17.2 is the tobacco license application of copper nickel. Do we, as you recall, we approved, what, two other licenses a few meetings ago, and this is now bringing that up to date for the copper nickel. And city administrator, I assume all the background documentation checks are in order?
Yep, and we're all good for all of the improvements there.
All right, and anticipating that city attorney will say we need to do these separately, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported, the tobacco license for the copper nickel organization, further discussion?
Just to be clear, you need a tobacco license to get the cannabis license, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yep, that is my understanding, yep.
Okay, and so, let's see, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor granting the application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's granted. Moving on to 17.3, there's a cannabinoid license application from the same organization, the copper nickel, and I assume if the qualifications, the application for the first licenses in order, city administrator, this is also?
Correct, yep.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the cannabinoid license application?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved, approved, support?
For discussion, I'll support.
All right, supported and moved, and for discussion, Councilor Joss?
So, real quick, I just want to make sure, because we have two of these that we're approving tonight, have they, they all been checked, they're all following all the ordinances that we have set in place?
Yes.
Okay, my question is, if something comes up where they're, say they're in violation of the ordinance, can we, can we remove that license? Can we take that away from them?
I wouldn't think that we would be able to do that, just, just like a tobacco license.
Okay, I just want to make.
Subject to due process.
Well, all right, due process, you just can't go and yank it, there's got to be a reason for it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And there's a specific distance from the school to these shops, correct?
Schools and churches.
Yeah, I think there's actually, I believe there's one that, there's some that won't be able to apply because of that distance.
Okay, so who's doing like the measuring? I guess those are my questions.
Chief Suler, he's a part of this process as well.
Okay, okay.
Wasn't it 500 feet from a church too?
Church in a school, yep.
I, you know, and I guess that's something that the GIS system's also good for too, because staff can go to the GIS per 500-foot radius on there, and you can see, you know, where you're at.
Great.
So, and I just want to make sure, again, I want to make sure, I want it on record, that if, for some reason, they're within that 500-feet radius, we can take the license away.
We should approve it.
Well, it shouldn't be approved, I mean, you don't want to go down that path when you approve it and then you backtrack and say.
Is this, did they stake this out?
So, I believe Chief Suler does the measurements on that, to make sure that we're in contact with all that.
For sure, did, did it happen?
For sure did, or we, can we?
They don't come up here until it's been discussed.
Oh.
So.
Well, because I would, there's, I question.
I think, I think Lindsay sent out to all the council members the packet of materials from League of Minnesota City Lobbying Day, and one of the items they had in there were that, I mean, there are a number of pieces of legislation pending, but one of the takeaways I had from that was that it looks like if the state takes action on cannabinoid, that at least the current version at that time, that was first part of March, would remove a lot of the ability of our individual community or other communities to control some aspects of it. So it's important that we enforce, like you say, what we have now, we don't know what the future is going to bring, but that was, at that time, the direction the league was very concerned about, wasn't moving to adequately preserve our local ability to preserve those sale points, so. Councilor Hess, you look like you're anxious to, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'll go to the next one.
All right, so I believe we have a motion to approve on the table, it's been supported, and is there further discussion on that? Councilor Joss, do we resolve your concerns?
This is on the copper nickel one, right?
This is on, yes, this is copper nickel.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that license application is granted. Moving to 17.4, cannabinoid license application from Dick's Head Shop. That's interesting. Is it, the name of the organization, is it Hard LLC here?
Yeah, that's, that's H-A-R-D LLC, that's their, that's their company. I believe they got a business in Briner too, and that's what they, I think they do somewhere around that as well.
Okay, and so this is, this is the business that's near the Palo mutual across the street.
Correct, yep.
All right, and anticipating Councilor Joss's concerns about distances, but is there, for purposes of discussion, a motion to approve this?
I would make a motion to table this one until we get some measurements, we get two churches and a school involved here.
All right, all right, so motion to table, is there support?
Well, if I can add, oh, I do have the Coney Land Explorer up, and I can pop them all real quick if you'd like, or if you want to table it, that's fine too.
And table with.
Yeah, it's good to have these new tools, but we'll give you some time for some research, okay?
It'll give us till our next special meeting, and we can put it on the agenda for that.
All right, so it's been moved to table, is there support?
All support.
Moved and supported, further discussion on tabling this application? If not, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so it'll be tabled over, presumably, in the next meeting. Moving on to 17.3, the Miss Aurora Scholarship Request.
17.5.
No, I'm sorry, 17, what did it say? 17.5, correct, okay. Request for the use of some gambling proceeds. And the request is for a $2,500 donation, I thought we were.
This is 800.
You're not 17.6 there.
Oh, here we go.
It reads each year.
I thought, I thought we were talking about 800. 300 and a 500, all right. Is there a motion to approve the request for the use of $800 or up to $800 of the gambling proceeds for this purpose?
I'll make a motion to that for $800.
All right, moved for.
I'll support that.
800 even, and supported, further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we'll get on to 17.6, agenda item, Volunteer Recognition Committee, yeah, acutely aware, it hasn't met since 2019, as noted in the comments I made, that we've got an event scheduled for April 20th, and the committee is requesting $2,500 to come from the gambling proceeds. The vast bulk of that is going toward feeding the volunteers, and some modest amount of it for door prices, but the event lane from Evolith is, is putting together Alfredo and sausage and Alfredo entree and some other equipments for that, and it'll be a chance to showcase our remodeled community center, I suppose, at the same time as the event. So is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
All right, move for discussion, support?
Support.
Moved and supported, all right, so, Councilor Hahn, collect, discussion?
I think this is great use of gambling proceeds. I'd like to see the caterer come from our town, would be nice to use a caterer, a restaurant from our town to, to feed the volunteers versus going to another community. Of course, it cannot be thought.
Are we looking for next year?
Cannot be thought of for, for this event, because you already have someone in place, but going forward, I think money that comes from this town should stay in this town and should go to the businesses in our town.
Right, good consideration there.
Who sits on the volunteer recognition committee? Do you know the members?
Well, yeah, it's Jen, Lindsay, myself, and whoever else we get to put in some comments here and there, but yeah, it's just probably mainly the three of us, and then we'll be enlisting, obviously, other volunteers to actually implement. There's some, well, I reached out to some school elements for some support.
And in the past, they typically highlight one individual from the community, will they do that?
I think we've done that mainly at the El Hadnik event.
Oh, okay, I'm confusing, sorry.
Yeah, we could do in the fall, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for discussion.
Yeah, it's been a number of years.
Since both, yeah.
The beautiful thing, actually, I have to commend Kim Zinsky, she created a checklist that sort of condensed the experience of over all the years to try to make sure that we could comprehensively and in some coordinated way address the issues, so I am looking forward to a really good event, so. Okay, further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, taking care of that. 17.7, the rental ordinance preliminary draft, legal counsel or the city administrator, who would?
Well, I was who we talked to at, I call it the pre-agenda meeting, and short-term vacation rental ordinance to get a handle on that, kind of ahead of the curve here. Then the other is inspections for rental properties, to make sure that absentee kind of landlord are on top of their properties and making sure they're safe for the renters and that they're going to maintain their properties and not let them go into blight. So there'll be an inspection if they're going to have a rental property, and then that gives the city some control over what's happening in that structure. So it's preliminary now, everybody gets a chance to look at it, I'd like it to be, be on the next agenda for more input, but I'm here at the first Tuesday of the month, I'd like to be here, that if it's ready to be passed or approved via that meeting.
All right, so it's for information only at this point?
Right, table it to the next meeting, they can bring back to Luke at the, the next meeting, and the concerns, and we can modify it or change it, and then the first one in May, if we've got it together, probably act on it, on what we're looking at.
I would just encourage any of you, reach out to me one-on-one, emails into my office, whatever, and we'll, if you've got something to add or subtract or whatever you'd like to do, we'll take care of it and discuss again and then.
So it was presented as a preliminary draft, I'm assuming therefore not for action, but we still, would it be necessary to table it or not?
Well, I would just table it, see if I lose track on it, so it's on the next meeting that the counselor can.
It's a motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table.
Motion to table. Support from Councilor Hess, further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that matters, carried over to a future meeting. All right, so that matters, carried over to a future meeting. 17.8, other, city administrator, any?
Yep, I do have one other thing here. We do need to have a special meeting on June 1st, sometime in the morning, hopefully. What's, needs to be approved are liquor licenses. There's some delays going on with the state right now. So that's all that's going to be on there. We just need to try and get that done and approved so we can send it off and get it back in enough time for July, July 1st, basically. Because I think you guys remember last year, we had to write one off temporary.
So we'd need to take motion at a meeting on June 1st or by June 1st?
Yeah, on June 1st.
On June 1st.
Yeah, and then.
That's a Monday. I will tell Evan, we heard from that meeting, so.
Yeah, and if we don't have a quorum, then we could, June 2nd.
June 1st is Thursday.
Is it, yeah?
And I said, oh, I'm sorry.
I thought it said June 1st.
Yeah, June 1st.
I'm sorry.
It's a Thursday.
Yep, June 1st.
Perfect, I can do that one.
And this, and this is, if you have, if you guys want to pick a time instead, we could certainly do that. And this probably is going to be an annual thing until the state gets their timing system done. So we don't have to worry about having temporary licenses in July.
The council, other councilors have, first of all, any problems with the date of June 1st? And then maybe let's, wouldn't it be appropriate?
About 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, that big, but like after 9:30, I think, or 10:00.
In the morning.
In the morning, yeah. He said that he'd like to.
Yeah, in the morning, in the morning.
That hurts me. We could do it at 6:30 if you guys.
What's your do there for that?
I think we'll rule that out. Well, it's very entertaining, but. It could show us up, let's finish it.
It's for you and I.
So do I, you're correctly, after 9:30, so like 10:00?
Yeah, 10:00 would work.
All right, 10:00 worked for everybody on June 1st so far? All right, so.
Is that a good time for you, Luke?
Yeah, it works, yep.
All right.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to.
I'll make the motion to set a meeting June 1st, Thursday at 10:00 AM to evaluate liquor licenses.
All right, support?
Support.
Moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have that, any other matters? City administrator?
No, I believe that's all I really got. We did meet with, and this is again water border related, but we went with the Federal Dollars Director out of Chicago today after South Cleveland meeting. So the good news on that is, so far it does appear that we could potentially bid the project as early as the end of June and get the bids in five weeks sometime in July. So it still looks like a summer bid on that, so.
So the, and the hydrology study also has to be in, right? So that's two or three months.
It should be done as well.
Good shape on that.
Yep.
Oh, that'll be a relief.
The community center HVAC install will be done the week of April 24th. So just for the community, we won't be able to rent it out that week, it's a five-day project. So you guys already approved that, but that's when you can get in and get that taken care of. That's all I got.
And we're, we are keeping in touch with St. Paul about the dollars funding this way, but it's still luck in the air, so.
True enough.
All right, if there's no other business, entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved and supported, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.